She's probably got a million doctors all not talking to her.
I could call and order the workshop for the Marion City Council for the month of January, and ask Councilman Fraser to lead us into place.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. I trust everybody had a merry holiday and a happy new year. And good to see Daniel back among our ranks. Is he back for good, or are you just here for a little while and gotta go back? Good for you.
Welcome back.
You don't look any worse for wear. Which is amazing, I guess. We've got kind of a full agenda tonight, so we'll just get right into it. All the council members are present and accounted for. Our first order of business is the review of the minutes for December 6th and December 11th regular meetings. Does anyone have any additions or corrections to those minutes?
No, sir.
Nothing, we'll move on. One of the events that occurred rather recently was something that we should be pretty proud of. We received a workplace safety award from our workman's comp insurer, Chesapeake Employers Insurance. And you see the details in your packet. We were one of eighteen jurisdictions in the state to receive this award. And that's pretty special. Chesapeake Employers ensures most of the government entities, including the counties and the cities and other jurisdictions in the, in and around the area, and I guess other entities too. I don't know whether they go into business groups or not, but it's quite an honor to receive this award. So we really do need to thank our staff for doing such a good job and helping us maintain a better-than-average premium than some of our counterparts. So that's a wonderful thing. We also have something special coming up this Saturday. Everybody remembers Lou Jordan and the contributions he's made to our city. Passed away last December, I guess it was. And there's a memorial service at the Union Bridge Fire Hall on Saturday. Hope we'll be able to attend that. And in preparation for that, Marion City Council prepared a declaration declaring Saturday Lou Jordan Day in Tawnytown. I won't take time to read it now, it's in your packet, but it's a tribute to a gentleman that did a lot for our city and a lot for our community at large. And it's a fitting way to recognize him. So hopefully we'll all be able to gather on Saturday in Union Bridge and celebrate Lou Jordan. Hopefully the snow won't be too deep.
You're starting rumors, Mr. Mayor.
I know.
You're starting rumors.
I don't think, I looked at the weather map, and we're all right.
That's what weathermen do for a living.
Reception of delegation is next on the list. Anita Colbert-Sowers would like to talk to us about the Military Banner Program.
Good evening. I have brought to Mr. Hines' attention, he and I met a couple of weeks, well, I guess two weeks ago, before the holidays. There are several cities throughout the United States that have this program already up and working and on display. What it is, it's called the Military Banner Program. And basically what that is, is it's created to pay tribute to the brave men and women who are serving, have served, or have given their life in the line of duty in the United States Armed Forces. As a way to recognize those who have served, the city of Tawnytown, the American Legion has since Snyder Post 120 are participating in the Military Banner Program. This program is designed to honor any active, retired, or deceased military personnel who lives or have lived in the Tawnytown area. Purchased banners will be delivered to the town and hung on the poles in the downtown district during the months of May and November. May for Memorial Day and November for Veterans Day. Each banner will list the honoree's name and branch of service. A copy of the service member's DD 214 must be provided for proof of service. Along with that, we will need a five-by-seven or larger photo, collared photo of the service member in uniform to be provided to us, all right? The cost of the banner is still, I'm negotiating with trying to keep the business local here in town and using the printing shop up by the square. With that, I need to meet with Mr. Hines again, and there's quite a few information about the size and how we're gonna hang them, okay? Approximately $100 is the cheapest so far that, and that was in Middletown. Middletown has this program, and Hagerstown, Emmitsburg has it. Quite a few towns have it. Ocean City puts it on a boardwalk. And what they are, they have, it looks like this, basically, okay? So they serve, sorry. So they'll have the photo of, they'll have Tawnytown on them. They'll have the photo of the veteran, and then we honor. And they have different backgrounds that we could use, but this is the most popular that has been in any of the information that I've researched, so. And this one says Middletown, because this is my son, and he graduated school up there. So they asked if they could also do one and hang it on their streets, so. And I said, naturally, I said sure. So, but they'll look something like this, okay? As I said, right now, the cheapest would be $100. And it can be sponsored by family, friends, a business, or any organization within our area, Tawnytown area. Once the application and the payment from the friends, the family, the business, or the organizations have been received, the banner will be created. The display will come, first come, first served. So depending on how many, you know, applications that we get. And basically what I'm looking at, to get it started, probably until the applications start coming in, will be those of us, like with the American Legion or around town, that we know we want to do it, we'll get them up. Once the word gets out, there are some cities that have had so many applicants that along with putting the banners down the main street, they have had to also, like in the park area, set up an area and they lined them up. So hopefully, I would love to see ours grow to be something like that. But, so this whole program was created, again, to recognize those serving now who have served or who have lost their lives in the line of duty. It takes a lot of work to get it to get up and running. We want to get it up and running so that we have something to display for Memorial Day, for May. So that is my goal right now, is to get the basics of it started, get a couple banners made so that we do have something up for May. I will be working closely. I have, as far as communication, I'll be putting something in the town paper so that we can get the word out. I'll need to work with Mr. Hines as far as getting it on the Tawnytown website. And the whole program is designed so that if they go in and look at the website, there should be a place, well, it will describe the whole program, and there should be a place where they can just click on to get the application. There are, in the bigger cities, it goes directly through the city office. The city office has a committee that does nothing but work on this banner program, Military Banner Program. But what we're gonna do, what we would like to do, is all the applications to be received. I'll give paper applications for the town office, if that would be permissible, have paper applications at the Legion and at the VFW in Harney, plus the website. They can print the application. And then we're gonna have them sent back, mail them back to, and I have a post office box, that it will come to the post office box. I'll pick them up, along with the DD, have to review it for the DD 214 to make sure that they are eligible for this program to be displayed. And then get the banners printed and work closely with the representatives and whoever we're gonna need to have put them up, okay? Yes, sir?
Are you aware that in December, the town passed a policy that requires a million-dollar liability insurance for any display on public property?
I know, so actually, I am not, because I have not gotten into it that far yet. But I feel sure that Mr. Hines and I will talk about everything that needs to be talked about in reference to that.
Okay, I just wanted you to be prepared for that.
No problem. Thank you. Anything else?
Well, before we go on, I guess, you know, I want to say two things. And one of them is that Harney is here, basically, to get, you know, permission to proceed with this project. That's one thing. And the second thing is, is that she's mentioned to me that there's typically a military liaison that a lot of municipalities have. And she's volunteered to do that. So with that, I guess that the next conversation would be, is, you know, is it okay or not okay?
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I think this is a wonderful idea. And I guess my question for, you know, Henry would be, if we decide, if we all agree this is a good idea, what can we do to help facilitate this?
At this time, I don't have the answer to that. This is just, we were working in concept. But I'm sure, based upon what, you know, was said, that I know that the Legion has donated $1,000 to this project.
Yes, sir.
So anybody, and we need to spread the word around. And if the council feels that they can do a contribution, then that would be welcomed as well.
Right. And basically, what I was hoping for from the council also is the support and the backup and the support. Once we get it on the, to get it on the Tawnytown website, you know, and get that all set up, the majority of the information will be there unless someone were to have a question. Then the backup also would be, you know, and correct me if I'm wrong, I believe on Memorial Day and on Veterans Day, the people from, the men from the Legion put the flags, the American flags up along the street. Okay, so that was our responsibility to put the American flags up. So, you know, we are not, we would not turn away from the idea of us putting the flags up also, although as you've said, they're, you know, with a liability. So the support would be helping us getting those up. We could take care of everything else, but the support of helping us get, you know, to get them hung for that particular time, so.
So if, the other thing to address, the million dollars, is that if this would become a subcommittee within the city, it would be, you know, carried under the cities. There's no need for anything.
The project is very attractive. I've seen this in my travels. I think Waynesboro was another town.
Waynesboro, yes, and I couldn't think of that one. Yes, sir, Waynesboro.
That had this, and maybe Boonesboro, I'm not sure. But anyway, it was, they're very noticeable and very attractive. And, you know, you, I wondered how that happened or what if, who was behind that when I saw those as I was driving by. And often thought to myself, gee, well, does that look great in Tawnytown? I think the idea is wonderful. I mean, I think we need to define if it's gonna require any staff time or from our part.
Yeah, and we haven't worked any of that out.
And all sorts of funds. We gotta decide that, too.
Yeah, because the first step is to get some sign of approval here. Because no sense in doing any work if you don't agree. But, you know, part of the thing we talked about is that hopefully that this would start out as something that would grow every year. And, you know, and for example, one of the things we talked about is, like downtown in the square would be sort of dedicated to those who have lost their lives. And then that would be the core, and you just work out from there.
So the criterion is service people who are from the Tawnytown area. In other words, that's who you're trying to display?
Correct, yes, the Tawnytown area. And with that, when we were talking, we were trying, with the guidelines of what the Tawnytown area would be. I know that Westminster is also contemplating a program like this. So, you know, we would have the dividing line. So we're just gonna focus with the Tawnytown area and maybe, you know.
If you stuck to a zip code, that would be, that would be good.
Well, the thing with, correct, I agree. But then you're looking at, Kymar's zip code is different than Tawnytown.
We want to include Kymar.
Okay, yeah. And then you have, I mean, Union Bridge has, does not have the program. They have a different zip code, but they have the VFW over there. So I would not, I would not assume that we would go into their territory. How, some of the towns, one of the criteria they used was if the military personnel graduated from their school in their town, okay? Well, we were talking about that. That would be very difficult to do. I mean, because we've got Key. Tawnytown doesn't have a high school. So we have Key. Who goes to Key? Union Bridge, Kymar, Harney. Some from Westminster come up there. You know, you go so far down from Westminster, we would pick kids up and bring them up to Key. So that, I deliberately left that out as a criteria because I didn't think it was fair to just put that on as a limitation that you had to go to our area school, but with the zip code, but we would have to include. I would think we would include Kymar. Kymar's between Union Bridge and here, but a lot of the people come here to go shopping and, you know, use our business facilities.
Well, you can work that out.
Yeah, yeah.
I would just, and I'm sure you realize, but we wouldn't want to have Union Bridge folks in Tawnytown and Tawnytown folks in Union Bridge. You'd want to kind of keep them.
Exactly, exactly, exactly. So as far as the area, and then I believe you had said that there's a criteria that you use anyway for designating Tawnytown.
Well, we did for the scholarships. We have the area criteria. Can I check with Diane what that currently is?
And there's some of the things that, again, that we would want, if it's approved, that we would have to specifically, I would come in and specifically work out, you know, because I really don't want to cross any lines. And I don't want to exclude anyone that should be included, but yet I don't want to get into somebody else's territory if they're looking at, you know. And then to get everything set up and organized and who I would need to work with and make it so that it happens the way it needs to happen for May and November. And one of those, again, would be the idea of setting up on the, on the Tawnytown website. I would have to get, because I have no idea who does the Tawnytown website. I mean, I can have, I can type everything up. I can get it all ready. But it's neat, you know, to get it on the website, I would have to work with that person, so.
So let me ask, I mean, do we just need like a general verbal consent to explore this? Do we need like a written proposal before us to say, okay, we approve this and let's move forward with this? I mean, what's?
No, I don't think you need to be as formal as that. But, you know, concurrence that they would, that the city would adopt this program would be the first step. And then what we would do is we would work, and work some of the details out and come back and let you know what we've come up with and, you know, move on from there.
If the city crew's gonna put the banners up, we need to consider that. We need to, you know, there's a lot of things that we, on the surface, we're not thinking that would be involved.
Yeah, that's, that's.
So we need a, we need a, this is what we're gonna do and this is how we're gonna do it kind of document. But I think the idea that everybody seems to be pretty much in favor of it should, you know, should encourage you to move forward.
I'd be happy to do that.
Would you get that by consensus, Mayor?
I guess, can we get, can we get a consensus tonight?
Yes.
Who feels that?
We passed a procedure last month for applications for people who want to use government property. And that would be the procedure.
Is it your consensus that we should move forward with this, Don, or do you object to it?
Based on those rules that we passed last month, I'm in favor of it.
I think if this is a city-sanctioned thing, then it's not gonna matter.
If it's city sanctioned, it is not gonna require.
Right.
It'll be carried under our insurance policy.
I think it's a great idea, Mr. Mayor. I think we should do it.
All right, everybody feel accordingly, or whatever you go. Thank you for coming to us.
Thank you very much. I'll put everything together and have it outlined for you, and we'll continue from there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I said at the Christmas tree lighting that this was the most wonderful time of the year, but then I forgot about the audit review. That's what's next on the agenda. I don't know whether I'd kind of put it up to that spot or not. But anyway, it's something that we need to do and hopefully it came out all right. So Michelle, I'll turn it over to you, and you can let us have it.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Michelle Mills, and I'm engagement partner with Eileen Alex Dang. With me tonight is Adam Lichtenstaff. She was the in-charge accountant who worked on the city's audit. And we have provided to you the entire copy of the draft audit report. You can see that it is forty-plus pages. This evening, we will not be going through each and every page. That's our present to you. We have prepared a PowerPoint of the things that we think are important that we would like to highlight, and certainly, there's many questions I think. So the first thing I would like to bring to four or five basic bullet services. Our firm was engaged to do a financial statement audit. And it's important when we talk about an audit that everyone's aware of the individual responsibilities of their respective parties. Our responsibility is to plan and perform the audit to make certain that the financial statements are free and materially stated and to perform an opinion. Management is responsible for the financial statements. And I need to emphasize that. Management is responsible to express an opinion. Our audit has performed according to the generally accepted auditing standards as well as government auditing standards. Based on our draft report, the city will receive unmodified opinion on their financial statements, unmodified meaning good. As many of you have heard me say year after year, GASB requires that the city prepare two sets of financial statements. And when we're going over them, I use the terminology of government-wide financial statements as well as smid level. And throughout the draft report, it's references to where receivers' respective presentations. So we look upon the end. So when we talk about government-wide financial statements, there's two required statements. And the first statement is the statement of net position. And when we're talking about the statement of net position, we break down your activities into governmental activities and business-type activities. And this slide shows citywide what your total assets were. And it was just under forty million. And so when you look at the pie chart, you can see that of those government-wide total assets, seventy-two percent of those were for business-type activities. And your business-type activities are the water, sewer, and function. And the remaining twenty-eight percent is the governmental activities, which encompasses everything else. This next slide kind of breaks down, you know, as I said, you had forty million in total assets. But this highlights some of your significant assets at the end of this week of 2017. So when we look at governmental activities, the cash and cash equivalents were just about 5.5 million. And that was forty-eight point seven percent of your total assets. So rather significant. The largest component of your assets is your capital assets, which is land, buildings, infrastructure. And that was just over 5.6 million, and that was fifty percent of your total. So this is not intended to report what your total assets were, but to just highlight the two significant items. Doing the same thing with your business-type activities, you'll see that the cash and cash equivalents were about 5.2 million. That represented eighteen point two percent of the total business-type activities' total assets. And your capital assets, you can see, are significantly more, at almost 23 million. And that comprised almost eighty percent of the business-type activities' total assets. On the flip side, total assets, we also have to talk about governmental-wide total liabilities. As of this year 17, the government has about 18.8 billion dollars in total liabilities. Seventy-six percent of that was business-type activities, with remaining twenty-four percent being governmental activities. Some of the significant liabilities from governmental activities, debt of about 1.5 million dollars comprises thirty-three point four percent. The most significant liability is the net pension liability at approximately 2.6 million, which comprises fifty-eight point one percent. On the business-type activities, you can see that the most significant item is total debt, ninety-six point one percent, at approximately 13.8 million dollars. The net pension liability, just for comparison, is only about 1.5 percent of total liabilities. This next slide just gives you some definitions. When you're looking at the draft report, you're gonna see terminology for inflows and outflows of resources. And this is relatively new when you're looking at governmental financial statements. This standard's changed about two or three years ago. So we're just highlighting here the definitions so that when you see the terminology within the statements, you have an underlying understanding what it is. And then just showing for each of the business-type activities what the total amounts were. For deferred outflows, it was mostly attributable to pension and debt refinancing. And with our deferred inflows, it was all attributable to the pension. So this is one of our accounting equations. We take our total assets plus our deferred outflows, minus our deferred inflows and our liabilities, and we get the terminology net position. So that's important when you're looking at your financial statements. For governmental activities, your net position was just over 7.6 million. And for the business-type activities, it was 14.7 million. And this next slide, it just shows you the total of the city. Net position was 22.3. And as I mentioned, each respective percentage, your business-type activities represented sixty-six percent of that balance. And governmental activities were the remaining thirty-four percent. And that was a 2.5 increase from fiscal year 2016. When we look at net position and when you're looking at the financial statements, it does get broken down into various classifications. Most of your net position is capital assets net of the year debt. So when we're looking at governmental activities, it was just, it was about 4.2 million. For our business-type activities, it was almost 9 million. If it doesn't have a restriction or designation with it, the balance is unrestricted. So you'll see that the remaining balance in your governmental activities, 3.4 million was unrestricted. Our unrestricted for the business-type activities was about 5.7 million. And the restrictive 25,000 was a condition of one of your loans that has been required loan reserve that's been there for a number of years. The next governmental act statement that we look at is on page 10 of the audit report. It's called escapement activities. This is a net expense statement, and it reports total expenses and then how those expenses are funded. You can see for governmental activities, we had about 4 million dollars of total expenses. Across program revenues, which consists of charges for services, operating grants, capital grants, contributions comprise about 550,000 dollars. So that means the remaining 4 million dollars of expenses is funded primarily by general revenues, which consists of your property taxes, income taxes, and et cetera. Revenue minus expenses consists of change in net position. Governmental activities saw a slight decrease in net position of approximately 141,000. On the business-type activity side, you can see total expenses were just under 3 million dollars, which are significantly funded by your charges for services of 3.3 million. There was a small decrease in capital grants and contributions, and about 153,000 in general revenues.
Business-type activities had a positive change in net position of about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the prior year. So, once we talk about the governmental-wide statements, we have to talk about the fund-level statements. The city has one governmental fund, which is the General Fund. The General Fund had total assets of approximately five point six million, total liabilities of about three hundred thousand. The remaining piece of that is total fund balance at five point three million. We are required to report your fund balance in five different categories, which you can see here on the left, is non-spendable, restricted, committed, assigned, and unassigned. Each of these various same components are described in the notes to financial statements that you can see in the draft audit report.
So, I'll pause here for a moment. When I talked about two sets of financial statements, prior to this slide, everything that we talked about was from a governmental-wide focus. Once we flip to this slide, we're talking now about fund level. And you might be thinking, well, when Michelle started, she said the city had forty million of total assets. And now, we're looking at this particular slide, and we're saying it's five point five. So, again, it's how we're looking at it in the measurement focus. So, number one, this is looking solely at the General Fund. And this is not accounting for a number of things that don't get counted for when we're looking at fund-level statements. So, the next few slides are going to do the required reconciliations, because we are required to show how we get from a fund-level presentation to the governmental-wide presentation. So, when we're looking at the General Fund at the very top, we were reporting that our total revenues were just about three point nine million, and we had total expenses of just over four million, leaving a deficiency of revenues over expenses of about a hundred and forty-four thousand. That number's different than what we talked about when we talked about the change in net position when we were talking about governmental activities. Now, when we met with the management team earlier, again, it's kind of unusual that the numbers are fairly consistent, a decrease of one forty-three versus a decrease of about one forty-two. But when you look at all these adjustments, they're significant. And it all is a matter of how they flip when we're looking at things. So, in the current period, this fiscal year 2017, we had significant capital outlay. And so, when you talk capital outlay from a fund level, those are expenditures. And that capital outlay of five hundred and twenty-one thousand would be sitting up there in the total expenditures above four million. When we do the governmental-wide financial statements, they become capital assets that are subject to depreciation. So, that's why it's a reconciling item. When we do the governmental-wide financial statements, we do have to calculate depreciation expense. And you can see that it's a very significant number, about three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. That depreciation expense is not in the number above, not the number of the four million dollars above. So, we're showing you how we're getting from a fund-level perspective to the governmental-wide perspective. The debt service expenditures would be your principal payments on your debt. When we talk fund level, they are expenditures. It doesn't matter. When we talk governmental-wide, just like when you're paying down your mortgage, you're reducing your liability. And so, therefore, it's a reconciling item between the two. The last most significant adjustment in this reconciliation is the net pension adjustment, because that's required only on the governmental-wide presentation and not in a fund-level presentation. So, to go from point A to point B, the total adjustment ends up being a reconciling item. So, on this particular slide, it's making, it's, we're showing you that the change in net position on page ten is how we got from point A to point B. And so, we did put the page numbers in here to help you subsequent to the meeting if you wanted to actually go back and see where we were pulling the data from. So, hopefully, you'll find that helpful. This one is another required reconciliation, because as we talk fund level, we talk about fund balance. When we talk about governmental-wide, we talk about net position. Again, you have to go from point A to point B. On page eleven of the audit report, when we talked about fund balance, we were at just over five point two million. When we talked about net position, we were at seven point six. And here are the reconciling items. For governmental activities, as I mentioned, we have capital assets net of depreciation of five point six million. Our deferred outflows, which is primarily related to pension activity, was about eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand. We get some small changes in some of our rules for interest and compensated absences. And you'll see that the long-term debt and the net pension liability are liabilities on the governmental-wide financial statements, but not required to be reported at the fund level. So, this is the reconciliation needed to get from fund level to governmental-wide.
The next couple of slides are quick snapshots of the General Fund revenue and expenses compared to the prior year. You can see that several seem comparable to the prior year. Income taxes slightly increased by about a hundred thousand dollars, with intergovernmental revenues decreasing about eighty thousand dollars. The main reason for the income taxes increasing is that, as you all know, you guys had a special income tax payment caused by an error from the state back in the state November 2016. And then, intergovernmental revenues decreased approximately eighty thousand as in the prior year. You've got the money from FEMA for the snowstorm reimbursement. The next slide looks at expenditures. Again, those are comparable to the prior year. Some of the most significant increases are in public safety and in recreation and culture.
This next slide takes a quick snapshot of the utility fund. And this shows operating revenues year over year. We had sixteen point nine percent increase on the other fiscal year 2017. We were at three point four million compared to just almost three million in the prior year. Our operating expenses had a slight increase of seven point one year over year. And the difference between the operating revenues and operating expenses is going to be termed operating income. And our operating income at the end of fiscal year 2017 was just over nine hundred thousand. This next slide looks at the revenues and expenses for the utility fund. We had operating income of just over nine hundred thousand. We have some non-operating revenues and expenses, primarily our interest income and interest expense, and the capital grants that we spoke about. So, our change in that position was an increase of four hundred and fifty-four thousand from the prior year.
From page thirty-seven to forty of your audit report, you'll see one of the required supplemental samples. It is about to ask for comparison on the General Fund. You see these four columns that are across the page. The first column is the original budget. The second column is the final budget that encompasses the amendments that you had during the year. Third column is your actual results with revenues and expenditures. And the fourth column compares the actual results to the final budget. During fiscal years 2017, you had two amendments which causes the slight changes between the original and the final budget.
As I mentioned at the start, before the audit, it aligns with governmental auditing standards. And as a result, we need to look at the city's internal controls over financial recording and compliance. And we're required, auditors, to communicate to you anything that is deemed to be a material weakness. And I've provided here the technical definition of what a material weakness is, so bear with me. It's a deficiency or combination of deficiencies in internal control, such that there's a reasonable possibility that a material misstatement will not be prevented or detected and corrected on a timely basis. And those are the key words. They need to be, will not be prevented or detected and corrected. We did not identify any material weaknesses during our audit. A significant deficiency is a deficiency or combination of deficiencies in internal control that is less severe than a material weakness, but we think is important enough to merit attention by discharge with governance. And so, we would be required to report anything that we deem to be a significant deficiency. We identified two internal-controlled deficiencies during the current audit. And you should turn to page forty-six of the audit report. So, finding 2017-001, internal controls over payroll. You can read along with me. Under criteria, the city's process for the registered prior processing, the pre-processed labor report, and all the time sheets to be given to the city manager for review. And the city manager is responsible for reviewing the reports and ensuring that the amounts are due to the time sheets provided. To document the review, the city manager was to initial the five-page report. During our testing in fiscal year 2017, we noted that the pre-processed labor report was not initialed by the city manager for the entire first quarter of this week in 2017. However, we did expand and look further, and we found that all of the subsequent quarters of the fiscal year had been reviewed and stated in the city's policies. We recommend that management follow its stated policies regarding the review of the payroll reports and the blue time sheets to ensure that payroll costs are actively recorded. So, this is a case where the desired internal controls was appropriate, but we failed to do what we said. The second item noted is on page forty-seven, and that's finding 2017-002, internal controls over bank reconciliations. Under criteria, you'll see that the city's process for bank reconciliations stated that the bank reconciliations, including review of the bank statement balances and general ledger report balances, were to be performed monthly by the treasurer and reviewed by the treasurer, who is also an authorized check signer. The condition is that procedures as currently designed do not allow for the proper segregation of duties over bank reconciliations. So, this is an issue where the internal control policies are not properly designed. And this, again, we can go back and see how this evolved. We had engaged the firm, Regulamen, to assist with financial review and oversight for a number of years. And one of their required procedures was to review the bank reconciliation that had been prepared by the treasurer. Then, when we disengaged them for doing that type of review process, and it became done entirely by the treasurer, we had no segregation duties. So, we recommend that the city implement a policy where the bank reconciliations are prepared and reviewed by two separate employees. The city needs to ensure that there is a proper segregation of duties, and that authorized check signers are not solely in control of the preparation and review of bank records. For each of those findings, we had asked management to provide a written response, and we expect to have that. We'll incorporate it into the final report that we'll get for Monday's meeting. I know it's the draft, and we just haven't been provided it. So, we'll have to do that as soon as we have it, and distribute these other documents to you. The last page is letting you know where we stood in person to the findings of the prior year. So, on page forty-eight is the summary schedule of prior year audit findings. And we had one finding in the prior year that related to cost allocations. And so, I was going to reiterate what the response, what the recommendation was, the response and status. We have recommended that management implement a process where employees' time is recorded to the various departments based on their level of effort, without changes to the current approach of recording personnel costs as a risk of material misstatements as well as above. And the issue last year was that we were using budget estimates instead of actual total effort. Management indicated a year ago that they would redesign the time sheets to reflect the allocation of costs for both management and hourly, and that management will instruct on the need to keep a weekly accounting of time. In most instances, it's difficult to account on a daily basis, and they expected to implement it within sixty days. So, we're recording to you now the current status. The time sheets have been modified, and management continues to review and monitor the allocations periodically for these events, which is what we're asking. Since the audit was performed according to the governmental auditing standards, we're also required to communicate whether or not we found any issues of non-compliance, and we did not.
Now, the next piece to go over is that stateful letter that we passed around. But here are just some of the key points of the letter. This letter's communication of governance and conclusion of the audit. There are no new accounting policies that were adopted, and existing policies were not changed in fiscal year 2017. New transactions were entered into by the city, which lacked authoritative guidance or consensus. We encountered no difficulties in dealing with management, reporting, completing our audit. No material journal entries identified in the course of our audit testing, and we had no disagreements with management that arose during our audit. We would strongly suggest you read the entire letter, because it does have good, legitimate estimates and no disclosures.
So, back to our summary of forty-six minutes.
Out of curiosity, you talked about the net position, our business-type activities compared to our governmental activities. Is there an average ratio that you see in other governments as to how much is business-type, how much is government-type, and where do we fall in that?
Um, I guess we probably, we know that's hard actually, because everyone is so immediately different.
Right.
In your case, you have one, one business-type activity, some miss, others might have multiple.
Right.
You at least have positive numbers, whereas some could have negative numbers.
Okay.
Depending on where they are with infrastructure and recovery of the burn revenue and development contributions and different things. So, you at least have positive numbers. They look healthy.
Okay. So, us being seventy-two percent business-type is not a red flag in...
Oh, absolutely not.
Okay.
I think it's just very, maybe of all the growth and infrastructure that you've had to put in place over the last ten years, eight, ten years.
Right. Okay.
Another question?
I guess, did you notice anything that seemed, you know, I mean, apart from the recommendations that you made, did you notice anything was out of sorts, like any money was missing? There was anything of that nature whatsoever? Nothing at all? Good.
And I will say, you know, it was a little challenging in the fact that the treasurer resigned before the audit was completed. And a number of people did have to step up. Henry was asked to do a lot of things that maybe in the past he would not have to do because he would have a treasure possession. It was good for us this week to be able to meet the new treasurer and review this report with her, because it's very important that she understands all of the data that goes into this as well. Because at the completion of the audit, once it's been approved, someone's signing off, saying, yes, we as management are accepting responsibility. So, we spent some time with Barry and Henry on here this week to make certain that we went into the details, obviously, a lot more than what we did here tonight, so that they could be in a position to approve and accept our draft report. Regulamen coming in was very helpful, and they're knowledgeable of governmental accounting issues. They assisted with all the year-end entries, but when Bobby Joe left, quite frankly, she had done quite a bit preparing for the audit. So, thanks for that pretty good show.
Good. Well, thank you, Michelle, that, both of you, that was very well presented. It was easier for me to understand, so that was... I seem to, I didn't get lost or go to sleep or anything.
That's good. So, the next steps would be, we'll wait to receive the responses from management on the two findings that were cited. And we will also wait to receive the required management's discussion and analysis. And so, I know Henry and Barry are working on that. So, those are the two last pieces that we need. And we certainly are on the timeframe that we can have them between now and Monday, so that you can get an updated draft for those two items that are here, so that you can go and...
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we're at the spot on the agenda where I need to ask the council if they have any perceived conflicts of interest on the agenda item.
No, sir.
No.
No, sir.
And now, we have time for a public comment on anything that is not on the agenda. And remember, identify yourself, and you have three minutes.
Barbara Haltabrittle, 435 East Baltimore Street. First of all, I'd like to say Happy New Year to everyone.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
And speaking, saying that, a new year is a time for new beginnings. And now is the time to start anew at the council meetings. I found there are three ways to implement this new beginning. Number one, I would like to see respect and decorum once again at these council meetings. This applies to both members of the audience and council members. When someone is speaking, whether it's from this podium or the council table, please, no screaming, pointing fingers, name-calling, interrupting, and so forth. Everyone should strive to be civil and act in an adult manner. Everyone should strive to be civil and act in an adult manner, and give each person a time to speak. Number two, if you're sitting in the audience, please refrain from making comments out loud when someone is speaking. It's not only disruptive, but very discourteous and rude to those sitting around you. Everyone would like to hear what is being said. Number three, time at this podium is for comments only. That's what it says on the agenda, comments. This is not a question-and-answer period. If someone has a specific question for a council member, the mayor, the city manager, or our city attorney, make an appointment to see them or speak to them either before or after the meeting. If you speak past the three-minute mark, do not keep speaking, but sit down. That's why it's called three minutes. This gives everyone who would like to speak time at the podium. With everyone's cooperation, we can get back to taking care of our town business instead of wasting valuable time. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
Well spoken.
Anyone else care to make a statement?
Good evening, Robin Fraser from Bentley Street. At the last meeting, it was said that there was potentially a conflict of interest regarding the nativity scene, so I just wanted to lay out kind of an outline of what took place, and I can give that to each of you so that you can see. Number one, a participant at our free Friday night at the movies, Republican Women's Club of Tawny Town at Flix in August suggested that we facilitate the American Nativity Scene Project in Annapolis or in our town. Republican women of Tawny Town agreed to do the project, and Catherine Adelaide was made the chair of the Nativity Committee. Catherine learns that a creche must be built, and so she requests the participation of the tri-district Republican Club, who have some men in it, and that they, the tri-district club votes to join the project, and Frank and Ginny Elgersma volunteer to build the creche. Then Catherine needed to get any permits that were needed in Annapolis. She could only get a four-hour permit. Mr. Wyprek said that you didn't need a permit here, but suggested that she go to council. Mayor suggested that she come to a workshop like tonight to present the project, which Catherine did as the chair of the Nativity Committee made up of the three people that I mentioned. The council then, it was put on the agenda for voting. The council refused to vote on the request, but instead voted in a new application process. That was the only time that Councilman Fraser spoke to this issue, objecting to the council approving the application, but suggesting that they move with the request that was already on the table, and then approve the application for later. That died for lack of second. The new application required one million-dollar liability insurance, so Agora Evangelism Ministries at that point, after all of the discussion and everything, joined the sponsor list so that they could provide the insurance. Until then, again, applicants were the committee, which was Catherine, and the two, Mr. and Mrs. Elgersma. Then it said that the Bible quote and the quote of the First Amendment need to be removed. Catherine goes to the mayor, he says he's going to overturn that, and then the mayor writes a letter saying that for, four to one, the council voted to agree with the city council, the city manager, that the nativity had to be denied. And there was, Councilman Fraser did not receive notice of any meeting and did not vote, so we're not sure exactly what that is. So that, I'm going to, can I give you a copy of that? May I approach and give you a copy so you have?
Thank you. Anyone else care to make any comments?
Thank you for your work on that. Thank you.
Barbara Cook, Clubside Drive. Last month, a young man got up and asked, spoke about cleaning up the bay, and he's interested in it. I think his name is Jeremy. I'd like someone to give me his phone number. I've been collecting information about cleaning up the bay for about ten years, and I would like to talk with him about it, give him the information, and maybe getting a way to get it to the legislature in Annapolis. It's my personal opinion that the legislature in Annapolis doesn't really want to clean up the bay, because it's like a goose that lays a golden egg, and we're laying the golden egg all the time. Every time they would like some more money for something, they cry, "The sky is falling in," or "The bay is getting dirty." So that's my interest. And next month, I think I would like to maybe speak about another way to clean up the bay. And I have noticed that Tawny Town in Carroll County is contributing to it probably innocently or unknowingly, so that's my future thought about speaking.
Thank you, Barbara. Anyone else care to make any comments on non-agenda items? Thank you all for those comments. We'll move on into the agenda now. Resolution ordinances and agreements we have for adoption on Monday. Resolution two thousand eighteen oh one, water allocations for January of two thousand and eighteen. Anyone have any questions on this resolution?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right. Next, we have the city manager's report. Henry, what do you have for us this evening?
Well, we're still working on, you know, consolidating the twenty-five or whatever you use, and down to six years, and we need to set up some review date. And I have a suggestion that we set February tenth as a retreat date, and if that doesn't work, then we can find out, get another date. But if anybody, everybody can get to me with that, whether they're free or not on that, it's a Saturday, let me know. And again, we're still working on the capital equipment and also adjusting that down to a six-year as opposed to twenty-five, was it twenty-five? I don't think it was twenty-five.
Thirty.
Thirty? I don't remember.
Twenty-five.
It's too big to remember.
It was too long.
Yes. Okay, and so the visit to Tawney Stairs, I've been in contact with them, and they're really pleased and happy to do so, but they want to get back with me with some dates, and they haven't done that, and I'm sure the holidays have had a lot to do with that. And, you know, the last thing is, is that Barry Avalon started on December the eighth, and she's our new treasurer. And I'm going to make some time with her to come meet with everybody here. She was not available tonight, so that's it. Not much is, oh, one other thing.
You know, speaking of touring Tawney Stairs, they mentioned when we were out there with the congressman that they'd been in business, or Eric's part of the business, had been since nineteen fifty-eight.
Yeah.
Which makes sixty years. So perhaps it would be in order to have some type of proclamation when we make that tour to present to them.
That would be fantastic, you know, but I would want to let them know in advance that that's going to happen, so we're not surprising them, and nobody, not the important people not be there. The only other thing that I have, and this has been a little bit of an ongoing issue for the past three days, and we've had a sewage backup, and it actually spilled out into the grass and onto the street, and there was a real communication issue with the homeowner as to who was responsible for that work. And then, you know, it culminated today with, they hired, well, the owner realized, okay, yes, you're right. They hired a plumber, and the plumber shows up and says, no, it's the city's responsibility. So we had to go through that whole thing all over again, bring out the crews, actually go up with a scope and show them what the problems were, and it turns out that there's roots in the system that needs to be sowed. The plumber's coming back tomorrow to clear out the roots. It is cleared right now. We have discussed with him the, what he has to do to clean up the fecal matter that's on his lawn, and so that seems to be coming to a resolution. But for the, for the past three days, it's been, you know, a miscommunication, and one of the things that I've, you know, asked Dan to do is we're going to put up on Facebook website, you know, what the ordinance is, and explain step by step, you know, what this means, because in some cases, it's, there's a misinterpretation where it says that the, the city takes ownership of the lateral, and that's true, but it's from the end of the property to the, to the main. And the real reason behind all that is, we don't want anybody to be just digging up and digging up our streets for that matter. So, but beyond that, from that, from that point on, property line back is responsibility of the homeowner.
Henry, a few months ago, we approved the company to come in and offer insurance to homeowners to, to cover things like this. Where does that stand? Where, what, where are we in that process? I saw a letter a month or so ago saying that they were getting that started, but I mean, I thought it would be in effect by now.
No, it's not. As a matter of fact, I just had contact with them today, and they, that's why I asked you to sign three times, so they can get, scan your signature.
Oh, okay.
And they wanted the city logo so that they can put out the mailing list to everybody. And, I mean, I think that's, that's it. So they have that now, so they're into our next step.
Okay, well, see, that's the whole idea, have, offer this insurance to folks. When catastrophes like this happen, they can, people can be protected. It's very inexpensive. Okay. Questions for Henry?
Yes, I just want to make sure I'm invited to the Tawney Stair visit when it, when it occurs.
Why would you not be?
Well, I didn't, was invited when the, when the congressman came. Just want to make sure.
I have nothing to do with invitations.
Well, aren't you working on the Tawney Stair?
Yes, I am, but you talking about something that happened in the past that I had nothing to do with.
No, I'm talking about making sure I'm invited. I was invited to the council meeting where you denied the nativity scene either.
Did what?
I wasn't invited to the council meeting where four people voted to deny the nativity scene. I wasn't invited to that meeting.
That's because there was.
And I want to be invited to the Tawney Stair visit, because I missed the.
And that's because.
The congressman was here.
There was no meeting. Did you hear me? There was no meeting.
Then there was no vote, a four to one, we were lied to?
No, there wasn't any vote.
We were lied to about that?
No, you weren't lied to. It was, it was communications back about the, the issue. Was no, no meeting.
Well, make sure I invited. That's what I wanted to say. Where is the roots in the, in the sewer system? Where is that in the city that we have problems with roots in the sewer system?
We don't, and that's the homeowner. The homeowner has the problem. We're okay.
All right. Other questions for Henry? Any questions on the departmental reports?
Mayor, can I just throw something in, since we're on the departmental reports as far as the trash collection goes? Really quickly, Kevin did contact us. There was a medical emergency with one of their drivers, so they are going to finish the pickup tomorrow.
That's good to know.
They just, there was a couple places they didn't hit.
I didn't realize they hadn't picked up everything.
Yeah, I noticed that when I got home that it was still sitting in front of my house, so.
They tried to step up the pace, but they, you know, they got so far behind, you know, they couldn't.
I don't blame them. It's cold out there. You can only step up so far.
It's also Christmas trash, which is three times what it is.
Oh, yeah. Present wrapping and all that, yeah.
With the, with the medical emergencies, the guy.
I have no idea. He didn't say.
I don't know that either.
On Bob's report, we've had kind of the same response for the last three or four months regarding Bollinger and the, and the gazebo project. Is there any way we could get a more current update on that? I mean.
I will do so. I will talk to Bob within the next two days.
Any other questions? All right, let's move into the legal report.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I have five things to go over with you tonight, so I'll, I'll go with the quick ones first. The first is your annual ethics package should be in front of you on the desk tonight, and they are the same forms as you filled out last year, so if your information hasn't changed and you kept a copy, it should be pretty easy to fill that out. But make sure you're going to fill it out and turn it in. The deadline is January thirty-first, so you need to get it back to the city office by January thirty-first. The Ethics Committee has already scheduled a meeting. I don't know when that is, but they've scheduled a meeting that they're going to meet with those, to review those, so that needs to be done. Any questions on that? Okay, the second item that I have is something I'm sure the mayor is going to talk about, but it is a continuation of the small cell discussion. You remember, we talked about the small cell antennas and the step that we've taken, and we really have now a two-pronged approach. One, the chapter that is still being developed that we talked about in the past couple months is still being worked on by the city engineers. It's a little far more complicated than anybody anticipated. Everybody wants to cut and paste what other people have done. That just doesn't work. However, we have the same applicant who is biting at the bit, and it's mobility to continue to try to put small cells in town. So this isn't a academic exercise. What we put in place is really going to govern what this first company comes in and does. And so whatever they do, the rest of the companies are going to want to do as well. So we have to take this step very carefully. So while that's being worked on, the battle on the state level is still about to start. The General Assembly session starts next Wednesday, and there's like a two-pronged approach on the General Assembly side. The elected officials through the Legislative Committee, and I know the mayor will talk about that, are working with MML. The city attorneys across the state of Maryland are also banding together to try to figure out how we can come up with some type of creative language that will work with the small cell companies, realizing, as I told you last month, the small cell strategy is to have no local authority. So, you know, it's pretty black or white there. We need to make sure that we're successful in doing something, or else that will preempt all the stuff we do locally. So we need to have a win in Annapolis that gets local authority of some sort, and then we need to have the local authority here. So there's going to be a lot of effort being spent. I know the mayor will be involved down with the Legislative Committee, and the group that I'm on is going to be meeting in Annapolis and basically trying to lobby this as well. So this is an important issue. The criteria, and I think if you've seen any MML stuff come out, they talk about the idea that, you know, while telecommunications is important, and everybody realizes that the local control aspect of it, aside from just what they're doing, is important, because the next people are going to say, well, you're not allowed to regulate telecom, so now you can't regulate the gas company, or the electric company, or the cable company, or anybody else at that point in time, and that goes against everything that we talk about here, because we're supposed to be protecting our local people. So there's going to be a lot of that going on. It'll probably change, but I'm sure the mayor can update you on that. So any questions about that? Okay. The next is great news. Finally, Meads Crossing has recorded their plans, has signed, and we've recorded the Public Works Agreement, have executed all the agreements needed with the county. They posted as of today their letter of credit for the grading permit. Remember, we made that change for them, so they posted a letter of credit for that, and they've applied for their grading permit, and so that should be issued in the next day or so, and they're going to start. So what you should see out there is they're going to mow the site first, whatever that means beyond what you would think it would mean. That way they can lay out the survey and stuff, and you're probably talking about a good six months' worth of dirt work out there. They don't anticipate to have any models or houses for sale or anything that till about the third quarter of this coming year. So you're really, they're going to be working hard, and you're not going to see houses like in the spring or summer.
The fact that they're recorded lots means that they're now taxed on a residential level rather than a farm level, right?
Right. So now the recorded lots are going to have a higher value. The taxes come in already higher to us, and aside from just that aspect of it, it means that now they can be sold, which means we can start recouping the impact fees that we have, you know. we can start recouping the impact fees that we have, you know, basically needed to pay back, all the loans that we put out, all the way back to streetscape. So this is the economic engine now that we're hoping for, that it continues on. So they're going to pat themselves on the back for a while, and maybe a month or so from now, we're going to need to bring them in and we're going to need to talk, start talking about the bigger issues of what's next. Because in Phase One, and I don't want to get into all the details, but in Phase One, remember we put the water issues and the recharge issues, remember those things? We put them off. Said, deal with that in Phase Two, because we have enough in Phase One. Well, we're at the threshold of we need to rectify what that is. So there's going to be more meetings and more discussions, and you guys are going to need to get involved in that to figure out how that goes. So that's good news for, for Meads Crossing. All right. Since everybody else got to talk about this tonight, I, I want to say something about the nativity scene and displays on public property, right? That, we came up with the policy that we put in place to deal with the request that was made, and that's what you guys usually do. When, when there's requests, you try to be responsive. And we try to use some common sense and do some quick work. And remember, that was between like a Wednesday and a Monday that we came up with it. And regardless of how it turned out and all the conflicts of interest claims, any of that, there was no display on the public property. It didn't happen. And that's probably a good thing. What I'm going to propose to you all, not tonight, but I'm giving you the general theory, is that you may want to reconsider that policy in its entirety. There was a case that was decided by the U.S. Court of Appeals, the Fifth Circuit, in October of this past year that dealt with the display of crosses, like war memorial crosses, on government property. And in the end, after a long discussion about this, a cross that had been there for ninety years, or eighty years, or seventy years, but that many years, which was a memorial for World War I people who died, was found to be unconstitutional because it violated the Establishment Clause of the Constitution. So, and that's being remanded to figure out what they're going to do. That's in Bladensburg, so it's not somewhere else, right down here. In that opinion, there is a citation that talked about a creche on government property. And I wanted to read, it's only one line, but I wanted to read you why it concerns me. Because a lot was made out about the sign, and there was a lot of angst about what goes on the sign. Here's what this opinion said. It said, concluding that a creche on government property violated the Establishment Clause in part because a plaque stating its private ownership was relatively small in relation to the whole display, thus mitigating the plaque's value. So you see that while we said, the plaque was supposed to say ownership, and then there was discussion of could you put messages on it, there's an entire opinion that needs to be researched that says the plaque in that situation was so ineffective in making it look like it was private, that it looked like it was government, and the government therefore was violating the Establishment Clause. What I intend to do to make this clear is I want to write you a legal opinion. I want to put it all out. I want to give you a copy of this. I don't know why you'd want to read it. Councilman Vigliotti will. But it's like a forty-page opinion. I want you to read this. I'm going to get you the other opinion that talks about the creche. I want you to read that. But the one thing that I want to say, and it's unusual, but this is going to be a legal opinion to you, which means when I issue it to you, it doesn't get shared. We've had that problem in the past, Councilman Frazier, where it gets shared, it gets put on Facebook. If you feel that you need to share this opinion, just tell me that you think you're going to do that, and I won't include you in on the list. But this opinion is the opinion from, for the city to try to avoid future lawsuits. It is not something that we want to basically give to everyone else so that they can find out how they can poke holes in it. The scenario that I came up with is, once you read all this thing, you realize that there are some areas, like a pond being frozen, that are thin ice. And you don't know where that thin ice is until you break through it. Maybe we should be considering that with all the things that we do here in town, we shouldn't venture out into the pond at all and just let things be easy. So once you look at all that, I'm going to try to get that to you by Monday so that you can look at it. I really don't like to discuss legal things and opinions in public session, because we, we know what that leads to. And so if you feel like we need to discuss it, you can either see me one-on-one, we can have a closed session at some future time. But the opinion's going to speak for itself. So, any questions about that?
Yeah, my understanding was that nativity scene was a donation to the city. It was a donation to the committee from the ACS people.
Right.
They were giving that to the city. They weren't trying to set up private things and then take them back at the end of the holiday. The idea of this committee that did all this work, hundreds of hours worth of work, was to donate something to the city.
Well, none of that was apparent when this policy came to being. It became apparent.
Certainly apparent when, when this, this occurred, that it was a donation, like it was in the other.
Well, I, I can tell you for one.
The gift of that organization.
Well, I'll, I'll speak for myself then. I can tell you for one, it wasn't clear to me that it was going to be a gift to the city, because if it was going to be a gift to the city.
It was loud enough to hear.
Well.
You have to be deaf not to know that these people came donating something.
Well, see, the issue was you were involved on both sides. And so it's hard to see whether or not.
I'm amazed at what you do.
Well, that, let's not lose track of what we're dealing with here. Let's go back to, if it was, if I misunderstood and it was a gift to the city, then it's easy. I would have told you, you can accept the gift, and you can't put it up, because then the city would be putting up a creche, which would clearly establish, violate the Establishment Clause. But that was disingenuous. Regardless of what anybody says, let's recall what really happened. A group came that wanted to do this. They made the request. Catherine Adelley was the requestor. And then at the end of the thing, Agora, which is your group, is the one that sponsored it and was going to accept this gift. That's what we all read.
Only when the obstacle of a million-dollar liability insurance was put in the way of the Christians who came to apply for something.
Either way, at that point in time, you had a conflict of interest. And then I read further with, there was a robocall or something that says.
You're wrong about that again. Bad legal advice again. Mr. Mayor, that's very offensive. That is not what happened here. What happened here is, I'm the good Samaritan. There's a wounded person by the street, and these people walked by, and I came over to give assistance to these people. That's what really happened.
That's ridiculous.
So. That's not ridiculous. That's exactly what happened. These people were run before Jim Wypr, come before the council, voted in private without a meeting, four to one. They can't put the creche up. I believe that our people put, came to put the creche up after they worked so hard building it, that you would have arrested them on the property. That's the kind of reception we got for our donation.
Well, like, like I stated last month, the only impediment to putting the creche up was the wording that was on the sign. You attempted to politicize the creche, and that's what the council voted.
Well, we're lied to or not. Did the council vote four to one? Your message to me said the council voted four to one no in the middle of the night. Now, did that happen or not?
They did vote four to one in the middle of the night.
I wasn't included in that council meeting.
Of their opinion. And it was unanimous in my polling the council. I knew what you felt, and I knew you supported it.
You can't have meetings without notifying.
I didn't have any meeting.
Well, you also can't accept things on behalf of the city, which is what this robocall came out and said too.
You know I was for it.
Oh, just in public, you're for it.
But the rest of the council was against it.
Just in public, you're all for it. But privately, we would have been arrested if we, if the Elgerson had come with the thing they built and put it on the street before the tree lighting.
We, we don't need to talk about this. This, this is water over the dam.
Well, just ask the Elgersons how they feel about it.
And it's, it's, it's unfortunate that you failed to comply with the rules. That's the only thing that, that happened.
I just want everybody to comply with the rules.
You could have that creche where you wanted it if you pod, if you, if you followed the rules.
I want everybody to comply with the rules.
That was the point.
Can I have just a moment to address the million-dollar insurance policy? First of all, you are aware of that.
I am now. I've been getting the Facebook.
No, you were aware with that when you had the skateboard park to be used as a fundraiser for the park. You remember that?
Well, Herbert Hoover said.
Do you remember that?
The best way to overturn a bad law is strict enforcement.
Do you understand that? Do you remember that?
So I think that if you're going to require a million dollars of the Christians when they come to put up a nativity scene, that you ought to require that everybody wants to use government property.
We did.
Just, just so everybody knows.
Let me, let me just.
Any, any person who does business with the city requires a million-dollar insurance policy.
That's why I tried to warn this lady.
That doesn't mean you have to pay a million dollars for the insurance policy. You pay a premium to have that in place.
Well, that did not come, let's be clear, that did not come from the city. That came from our insurance carrier. And you did that also when you had that fundraiser of which was for the skateboard park, and the city never received any money that you raised.
That was no, there was never a fundraiser at the skate park. That's not true.
It isn't? Then why do we have documents to say so?
I don't know what you've created.
All right. Well, we're kind of off track here, folks.
So. It costs money to have that event. Now, we didn't make any money on that event.
Mr. Mayor, our, our council's offered to give us a legal opinion on this matter, and I think we should wait to read the opinion. And again, the policy that you implemented dealt with holiday declarations. So that's what I'm assuming it's about, and we have a little bit of time to figure this out, which is why it's not an urgent thing. But I want to give you the opinion, and I just want you to understand it's a confidential opinion. I've said it, now we know. Any other questions on this? One more item.
I just want to go on record that I don't agree that the things done in this building are not public information. The things done in this building belong to the public. The public pays all the taxes. They have the right to know what goes on in this building.
And that's why I brought this.
Bad legal advice.
I'm not understanding.
To your attention again, is that the last memo I gave you ended up on Councilman Frazier's Facebook page. So I will make it.
People don't know what you do. There's no report with, for $20,000 in July and August. There's no report in here from the staff member of the attorney for the city.
I'm sure that.
Never. Do I know what the attorney's been up to until we arrive at the meeting?
I'm sure that, and, you know, we've dealt with that numerous years ago when you share the legal report, which is confidential.
Is that true or not true, that there's no report in our monthly report this month?
It is, and you know why? I wrote you a memo, and I'll be happy to hand it out again.
So we don't get any information about what you've been doing for $20,000.
The reason that is, is that the first report I gave out.
That speech didn't last long, Barbara.
Right. The report I gave out, you gave to everyone at your very first meeting.
If there were any questions, then that was my question.
No, that was a comment, just so we're clear what the difference is. So what I want to do is, how about this? I'm going to give the legal opinion to the city manager, and then you all can decide who gets it and how you distribute it. Because it's clear that you have a member who is going to do exactly the same thing as happened before, and your group needs to deal with that. Because it's beyond me to advise you. And I understand you believe everything that happens here is public business, but would you allow these people to sit on the meetings with your attorney and find out all the conference stuff that you do with your attorney? Shouldn't the city organization that you're supposed to protect have the same type of obligations? Let me move on to the next issue, which will be just as interesting.
Thank you.
So you all realize that there's a pending lawsuit, okay? Robin Frazier versus the City of Tonys Town. It's on appeal from the open meetings lawsuit that happened last fall, or actually last summer, for the violation that happened that, that prior time. So we're about eighteen months from that meeting, and you realize that the appeal was noted on August 31st, which means when the plaintiff said, I'm appealing this, and she told you all about that. The only thing that I want to bring up on record for this is so that you understand the schedule, because a schedule has been set by the Court of Special Appeals. That the Court of Special Appeals received all the information that the appellant had to provide on November 30th of this year. They issued a scheduling order which said that the appellant's brief, which means her briefing of what the cases are, it needed to be submitted by January 11th. After that, the city would have thirty days to respond. And then the court would consider the situation. And if they are going to have oral argument, the oral argument for this case would be, they don't give you a date, they give you a range, the first two weeks of September of the coming year. So you can see, it's two years past that issue. We've received a request from the appellant that they get a grant, an extension of time, that they're not prepared to put the brief in on next week, next week, on the eleventh, on the 11th. And they requested a ninety-day extension of time. So the city manager and I, and the litigation attorney that's handling this, we talked to the mayor, and we're going to give a response on that request. And again, I don't want to get too into the details, but that is the timeframe that we're dealing with here. So I know a lot of you asked, when would this happen? Those dates for like oral argument are set in stone. So they don't change regardless of the stuff that happens in between. So you're looking at, if they have oral argument, it is in September. A lot of times, they won't have oral arguments when they're cases that are not represented by attorneys. They will just decide it on the paperwork. Don't get excited and say this thing will be resolved in September, because just because that's the oral argument date, it could still take two or three months before they issue the opinion. So you could be this time next year before you find out what happens. So that's the story. Is there any questions on that?
So the cases. Recommended that we, that this ninety-day extension be offered? I mean, that sounds ludicrous.
We, we talked, I know the city manager talked to you about it, and, you know, we have a proposal, but we'd rather not put it in public, so.
So the case is about whether or not they deliberately had a secret meeting they were convicted of having.
Councilman Frazier.
In the circuit court. Is that correct?
This case is brought by your wife. If you read the Ethics Code, you have a clear violation of the Ethics Code if you continue to get involved in it, because you have a conflict of interest. So I'm not going to provide you any information on this, because it's so obvious.
I just want the public to know that this is the only council in Carroll County that's ever been convicted for breaking the open meetings law.
I don't believe that's the case. You might read different than us.
Five or six points they were found guilty on.
We're not going to rehash this.
Whether or not they deliberately did it is the only issue.
How you want to believe it is irrelevant. Regardless, the appeal is happening, so logic would say, why appeal something that you won, right? Nobody does that.
Makes much sense.
And that's all I have.
Any questions for Jay?
Okay.
The food business tonight consists of the monthly financial report and the accounts payable. Does anybody have any questions on the financial report? If there are none, I'll ask that same question for the accounts payable. Anybody have questions on the accounts payable? Both those items will be up for approval on Monday night. Now it's time for public comment on items that occurred on the agenda. Does anybody have any comments on what we discussed tonight, agenda-wise?
Robin Frazier, Bentley Street. I just wanted to add something that Jay left out, because I'm not sure how much information you were given, but in your, the reason the extension was requested, one of the reasons[1654.25] is because my father passed away. And we have not had the memorial service yet, and it's kind of complicated. So, I would ask that you take that into consideration, since you brought it up. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Robin. I didn't realize that, but it's understandable. Anyone else? All right. Mr. Comment, the General Assembly opens next Wednesday. I promise this to be a raucous one. We have a lot of issues that we'll be promoting, and one of the things that happens at the opening session is that many organizations get together and hold receptions for the delegates. And it gives us a chance to kind of talk to our delegation and other legislators that will be affecting their, hopefully affecting their decisions in our favor. We'll be hosting, along with the city of Annapolis and a number of other towns in the state, a reception at the Governor Calvert House on the evening of the 5th. So, council, if anybody can attend that, or on the 10th, I'm sorry, not the 5th. So, if anybody can attend that, they're certainly welcome to come down and experience that. It's really kind of a lot of fun, and it's a big crowd, and it's a very productive time, because you find your state officials in a state where they haven't been shell-shocked with the General Assembly for the last 90 days, and they're pretty receptive to what you have to say. So, what I'm doing is encouraging you to attend if you can. I have a legislative committee meeting that day, that starts at 3:00. It's over probably about 4:30 to 5:00. And the reception is at 6:00. So, if anybody would care to come with me, it means you'd have to sit through the legislative session, our legislation committee session, but that's interesting, too, if you've never done that. So, I'd be happy to carry down there if you want to go. So, that's, just want to make that offer to council. If you want to go, let me know. Or if you don't want to go to ride with me, just go down there and show up. That's all. No tickets required. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
For a second.
Second.
Would you say aye?
Aye.
Lake side, so carried. Thank you.
So, your questions?